First, I'd like to acknowledge Ryan Vincent and Vincent Evaluations and his staff for the dedication of delivering a high-quality reappraisal and their partnership with the county. And also in my office, Nick Kimmel, who coordinates this effort every day and his commitment to our citizens. So I'm going to share a few brief slides that outline this reappraisal process and provide some historical context and highlight what we can expect as we move forward. So in the general information, counties are required to reappraise property once every eight years. Many counties have moved to a shorter cycle, with the majority choosing a four-year cycle. Values must be reset to reflect current market value as of January 1st. And most property values do not change annually, except in cases of new construction, splits, re combinations, and addition and deletions of certain things, such as porches, patios, garages, outbuildings. The Tax Department, with the assistance of Vincent Evaluations, has analyzed market sales to identify patterns and trends used to establish these values. And currently, we have a little over 79,000 parcels. Let's see here. Our reappraisal objective is, of course, to reappraise all real property at 100% of market value. State law requires that the property, both real and personal, be valued at its true value in money, and true value is being the estimated and price estimated between a willing buyer and seller. So I've found this map from the last reappraisal, and what it shows here is that in January of 2020, we had a little over 67,000 parcels, with 23,000 of those being vacant and over 43,000 that are improved. At the end of August of this year, we updated this map with over the 79,000 parcels of 26,000 that are currently vacant and 52,000 that are improved. So in the reappraisal process, there's many steps. We've completed the data collection and fieldwork. We are continuously working on the sales analysis, land valuation, and building valuation. That runs through the end of the year, as we have to take into account all of sales through December 31st. Value reviews are constantly in progress and will end at the same time the sales analysis does, and the process will conclude with the appeals at the end of 2026. So what's new this year is our mobile home reassessment. Mobile homes should be assessed yearly at market value as of January 1st, and what we discovered is that there was a schedule of values created in 1998 that has not been updated since. So what we'd want to do is, over time, between the growth of mobile home sales, it's contributed to a disparity in our equitable assessment of those homes across the county. So what we did is we worked with our GIS department to create an application to collect this data, and we created some assessment attributes. So we're looking at condition and grade and year built and size of these mobile homes. Staff visited over 3,700 mobile home sites within mobile home parks, and they have reviewed over 2,900 parcels that contained mobile homes. The results so far is we have about 662 unlisted mobile homes that were discovered for 2025, and we are hoping to make, get some quality control check in our data as we progress through the end of the year. We're going to create a new schedule of values for personal property to be more in line with the market values. And then we will mail notices to these homeowners at the same time as we mail our real property reappraisal notices. So everything will go out at one time. These mobile home owners will have the ability to appeal their values, the same as real property owners have. So next steps are, we have Ryan Vincent's going to come on September 30th, and we're going to present the Schedule of Values to the Board. Then there will be an advertisement in the newspaper announcing the availability of the Schedule of Values for review, and they will be on display in the Tax Department for the public. There'll be a public hearing to receive any feedback, and then it'll be followed up by the adoption of the Schedule of Values by the Board. There'll again be another period of advertisement, that the Schedule of Values have been adopted, and then anyone wishing to appeal the Schedule of Values to the Property Tax Commission in Raleigh will have 30 days to do so. So here's a graphic on that timeline, which pulls us into the beginning of '26, where we will conduct public meetings, the same as we did in '22. We're anticipating five to six meetings in that period of time around the county. We'll mail citizens their value notices, hopefully in March is the goal, and then the appeals period will begin and conclude by December 1st. So in summary, we're on track. Everything remains on track. We've hit all our key milestones as we're approaching the end of the year, so if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions? Comments?
Nope.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand that you said that these mobile homes had not been, had not been a revale on them since, what, you know, what's that?
1998.
A long time.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, will you be expecting the citizens to make up any tax, any tax that's owed because they had not had a revale?
No, ma'am. So the same in the last real property appraisal. We do have the ability to discover parcels of land and personal property up to five years, but I didn't feel that that was a fair process in this instance, as the citizens were unaware. So we're just going to correct and move forward.
But good thinking.
Yes, ma'am.
That's good thinking for the citizens of this county, because it's not their fault that had a revale or whatever. So that's my question.
Yes, ma'am. Any others?
Just, I wanted to, you know, at the conference this past year, you know, I attended classes on the reevaluation, and I think it would benefit you to kind of briefly just put it out there about how the reevaluations also help solve inequity in that people who are paying too much, when you go back and do the reevaluations, you also look at all the inequities out there. So I think that it's not all bad. A lot of the reevaluations, and now, and the reevaluations that the state's recommending now is a lot shorter period of time than even the four years. They're saying three years is a lot better or two years, but I understand the process. It's an extensive process. But if you would just touch a little bit on how you go back and you look at the inequities also.
Yes, so most counties have gone to a four-year cycle because it does kind of create a little more equity across the board, instead of having a long eight-year cycle. Also, real, excuse me, personal property mobile homes should be assessed yearly as of January 1st, but we don't have the capability to do that. So in reviewing this, knowing that there was an equity problem, it's just seemed that it was better to align that with the real property, so that everything is equalized at the same time.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have we ever had an eight-year revale?
Eight-year, yes, ma'am. The last eight-year revale was completed in 2017, and then we had a five-year for '22, and now we're on that four-year cycle.
Well, I remember the eight-year. This Reno's asking that.
Yes, ma'am.
You did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Discuss a request for approval of the change to the Flat Branch Fire Department Relief Fund Board Chair. Mr. Larry Smith, good morning, sir.
Good morning. Flat Branch Fire Department's requesting a change to their Fire Department Relief Fund Board Chair. They're requesting to change the one position to Mr. John Taylor, and he will replace Mr. Holt Philman. Mr. Philman passed away recently. And all changes, of course, to this, the leadership of that board has to be approved by our board.
Good to see you. Go ahead and add this consent agenda for approval. Thank you. And you are up again to discuss and approve fireworks application.
All right. Got a application from Pyro East Coast for Campbell University fireworks display on the 20th of September. They meet all the fire code compliance and safety needs for the event.
But it's a consent agenda for approval as well. Thank you very much, sir. And discuss the request to approve the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act agreement with Mid-Carolina Regional Council. Ms. Shaw, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I'm requesting contract approval between Mid-Carolina Workforce Development Board and Hornet County Workforce Development for workforce innovation opportunity funds to provide improvement and training to employers and citizens of Hornet County.
Okay. Are there any questions? Consent agenda as well. Too easy.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Discuss a request for approval to enter into contract with Cornerstone Detention Products. Mr. Gary McNeil, good morning, sir.
Good morning. We have nine or some cameras in the Sheriff's Office Detention Center. Those videos are maintained through the use of several servers. We have one server that's gone down, and we're asking permission to enter a contract with Cornerstone, who manages our video surveillance system, enter to a contract to replace that server that has gone bad, and we have funds available in our present budget.
Questions? No. Go ahead and add this consent agenda for approval as well. Thank you very much, sir. Right. Discussion on the public comment period length.
Oh, you skipped one. You skipped one. Number 10.
Discuss a request to approve Dewberry Engineers for the Sheriff Office Detention Center Generator Project. Mr. Gary McNeil, my apologies, sir.
No, no problem. You know, presently, we have a generator that only supplies power to our life safety, which is lights and the minimum that's required, and to a 911 center. We have been looking at this situation for years. We did a study a few years ago to look at adding an additional generator so that it will power to complete Sheriff's Office and Detention Center during hurricane storms. So we completed that project several years ago. We put out an RFQ. We're looking at companies to manage the project. We had received funding from the state to cover this expansion, and we interviewed, we had five applicants. We interviewed two, and the committee that we had put together recommended Dewberry. And we're asking permission to have discussions with them to enter into an agreement to manage the project.
Questions?
Well, excuse me. Would you, do you have a figure in your mind as to how many grants are given to us by the state for you all to operate there, Sheriff's Department?
What?
I'm just saying this. Do you have any idea how many grants you all get from the state to operate the Sheriff's Department? I guess the point that I'm trying to make is that all of it don't come from the county commissioners.
Correct. Presently, we have only one active grant. I reckon this one that we got from the state's an allocation through the legislature. I think they call it a grant, but it's
It's a grant.
Just an allocation they made to the Hornet County Sheriff's Office for this project. But right now, that will be the second one we have. But we have two or three grants almost every year that supplements the Sheriff's Office and the Detention Center.
I guess the reason I'm asking this question because I'm always getting the question of why y'all supporting the Sheriff's Department all the time with funding and whatever. I know we have our, we have the, we have our rights of what we're supposed to do, and let's keep, give you funding to keep that department going. My question is, and the reason I ask this is because the public don't know that you all get grants from elsewhere besides just from the county commissioners.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the reason I asked that question, to make it clear, because I can, I can say these things in the public, but people tend not to agree with that, certainly because they think all the funding from the Sheriff's Department comes from the county commissioner, which it doesn't. So that's the reason I'm asking that.
Each year, we usually have one or two grants, either comes from the federal government or to state government.
And let me say another thing is that the statement that you made about the cameras in the jail and all of that, I'm glad to hear that, because all you hear in the public is there are no cameras. There are no cameras. So you need to come up here and make that statement. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I ask questions to educate the public.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of these things I know, but I ask that the public don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Yeah.
Go ahead and add this consent agenda for approval. Right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, discussion on the public comment period length. This has obviously been a hot topic and a hot discussion here for the last two weeks. I know that we had gone back, what, about three weeks ago, to, from five minutes to three minutes. I did vote along with that that evening, and I'll go ahead and say sometimes I make mistakes and kind of jump the gun and, you know, let emotions get the best of me. So I would like to bring this back up for discussion. The five-minute length was actually something that I originally brought up when I first took this gavel back in December, and I would like the Board to reconsider bringing it back to five minutes. I understand why and some of the sentiments on why, you know, we wanted to drop it back down to three minutes, but if you can see, there's a list of rules for the public comment period that we have in our Board policies and procedures. And I don't know if there's something that maybe we want to add to this, or there are several things on here that we can actually enforce a little better, such as personal attacks and use of profanity is prohibited. I know that was a big concern for all of us, because don't really want to sit up here and get cursed at by the public, when we're up here trying to do the best for everybody. There's also a part in here about speakers' comments should be limited to subjects that are within the Board's jurisdiction. I know constantly, we get up here and we get chastised over things that are just completely out of our control. And, you know, to sit up here for three or even five minutes and, and mind you, I believe that we are here and we should have the five minutes to listen to the public, get up here to speak. But it also should be things that we can control, or sometimes it's things that could have been handled before even coming to the public comment period. Another thing that I believe, too, is that these cameras that are here in that podium play a big factor as well. And I don't know if there's something that we can possibly do about having the cameras shut off during the public comment period, so it is something that we can address, instead of having the podium just be used as a method to get social media followers for some people. I'd like to open the floor up and hear other people's discussion as well.
I think the public comment is definitely a part of governing, 100%. I think the five minutes or three minutes is not such a, it's not such a big issue to me as far as the three to the five, but it's a great opportunity for the citizens to come in and actually speak directly to us and give us information or an issue that they're having, something they can't get done, or something going on in the county. And too many times, the public comment is being abused and not used for that purpose. I understand when people come in and they're upset or mad about something in the county and they want to vent it, but you know, a lot of this stuff that has been going on most recently would have been a phone call away. I mean, I know that my number and everybody's number is published, and we'd be glad to talk to anyone about things like that, but I'm not against moving it back to five minutes as far as it being used as a true public comment period where people are coming in. We've got a prime example sitting right there. He comes in and he gives us information and updates about what he's doing and what he needs to do and what we need to help him do, and that's great information. But attacking us about what policies or things are going on in each department out there that we have no control over, we can't, we can't change those things. And so I think what we need to do, and this is just my suggestion, is that you put this on the next meeting as an item, and when Mr. Matthews is here and we all, you know, we take a stand on it at that time. But I think, I'm not against it, I'd just like to see it be used for what it's for.
Can you finish?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me say this. Two weeks ago, when the vote came, I voted with this Board. My job is not to vote for party or individuals. My job is to vote for what's best for this county. And when I voted, I voted what was best for us and sitting on this Board and what is best for this county. There were times, the reason we had the deputies to be here present at our meeting, we were being cussed out and called all kind of horrible names, because things were not going well with the Sheriff's Department and other personal issues. I made a statement because I got upset, and some of my people got upset with me, because ain't enough money that you can pay me to sit on this Board, to be cursed out and called nasty, nasty names for decisions that the majority made. And we should not have to go through that. That is a dangerous atmosphere to sit here and try to govern, and try to govern this county. Let me make this clear to those that are listening to me. I don't care if we have hours. I think the citizens need to voice their opinion. I think the citizens have a right to come up here and tell us what they need from us, what changes we need to make, and give us the consideration of listening to you and then making those decisions. I'm never going to take away the right for a citizen to speak to me, but you speak to me, and you speak to me, and you use the correct language. Don't curse me and call me all kind of names. And the statement that was made here was that I sat on the floor for five months, not wanting to associate with my members. The members of this Board at that time, they voted for me to go to the end of the line. I'm not doing that for nobody, because 60s are gone, and I let them know that. So I moved myself to the front. Every citizen in this county have the same rights, and I'm making that a statement to whoever is listening. I am not against the hour. I'm not against the two hours, but you use it in the right way, and you be professional about everything you do. Yeah, I speak out. That's what I'm here for. And as I said in the very beginning, a lot of times I speak out to let the public know, to educate the public, because everybody will understand what we're doing here. It's a much better atmosphere for me now, but I am not a person that's going to be pushed over or knocked down, but I'm getting up and defending myself. So what I say, I still stand by. If you want to change it to hour, you want to change it to two hours or whatever, but when you come up here, you come up here and you act professional, because we are here to represent you. I'm not representing myself. And you don't pay me enough money to do that, and you never will be able to. And that's all I got to say. And I thank you for the opportunity to say it. I don't care what color you are, what ethnicity you are. Everybody should have the same rights, because this is a country of freedom. That's all I got to say. Thank you. And I apologize for getting passionate about it, but I'm not a person to let you walk over me and call me names and say everything you want to say to me that is out of order. I'm just not that kind of person. Thank you.
Amen, yes. Well, I think we're all kind of saying the same thing.
In a lot of ways, I agree with the gentle lady. Here's the thing, the public comment period is there for a reason. We want to hear your legitimate business to come for this Board. If your family member is in the Department of Corrections and you don't think they're being treated right, we don't have any subject matter jurisdiction over that. We don't need to hear that. Okay? It's unfortunate, but it's not our jurisdiction. And the personal attacks that have gone on are pointless, they're counterproductive, and quite frankly, I think you can gather from what everybody's saying, everybody's tired of it. If you want to disagree, regardless of what side of the aisle you're on, we can disagree and be civil, and that's what needs to happen. That's how you move forward and accomplish goals. So again, you know, I'll work with the Board however you want to do it, but I think, Mr. Chairman, a lot of it's going to fall on you, because you have a lot of latitude as the gavel and reel some of it in, I think will solve a lot of it. But I agree with Mr. Jaggers, let's leave it open until next week when Mr. Matthews is here, and that way the whole Board in its entirety can make a decision on it.
That's his consensus, the Board, though.
Well, listed as an item that we can discuss and vote on it at the same time. I think that's, I mean.
Outstanding. Well, thank you. And I agree, Commissioner Morris, that things could be enforced just a little bit better in this position, and I may have failed in that sense, so thank you. All right. Good deal. We will now move on to Development Services briefing.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I thought Mark was going to leave because he won that parlay there with the shirts. Good morning, Ms. Arbor.
Good morning, Commissioners. One case that we will be bringing before you for the public hearing is Plan 2502, 0002. This is a requested rezoning from the RA 20R to the Commercial Zoning District. The applicant for this application is Barnwell Capital LLC. The property is approximately 3.05 acres, located on NC 87 North in Sanford in the barbecue township. So the site can be described as a vacant corner lot, which was previously used as a gas station and convenience store. A portion of the property is wooded, as you can see there in the aerial. Surrounding land uses consist of several commercial uses, which include a convenience store, licensed massage parlor, single-family residence, and vacant land. In terms of infrastructure available to the site, there is public water and public sewer available, and the property has access to NC Highway 87 North, which is, of course, a major thoroughfare for Hornet County. And NC 87 experiences an average of about 26,500 daily trips, and there's around 800 for Olivia Road. Next, we'll review the zoning district compatibility map. So the requested zoning district, commercial, is compatible with the other surrounding commercially zoned properties in the area. In addition, the property is located within the Highway Corridor Overlay District, which encourages commercial non-residential development while promoting safe traffic patterns. It also consists of enhanced commercial development standards for any development of non-residential, non-residential development of the site. Next, we'll take a look at the land use classification compatibility. So this property is located within a rural center, which is a land use classification, which is compatible with commercial centers and non-residential activity. So there have been photographs of the site, the surrounding land uses, roadways, and the intersection of NC 87 North and Olivia Road for your review. And staff is recommending approval of the requested rezoning from the RA 20R to the commercial. This is based on the compatibility of the requested zoning district with the uses in the area, as well as it is in accordance with the Conference of Land Use Plan, both the underlying land use as well as Goal 4, which is to encourage commercial recruitment, and it aligns with the strategies outlined for that. At our planning board hearing, the planning board did vote 5 to 0 for approval, and there was nobody to speak in opposition. Open for any questions. Thank you.
This was commercial property at one time, right?
So the property was used for So the property was used for commercial use, yes, sir. There was, I believe it was the Olivia Gas and Convenience Store located there for years.
It was a restaurant there, too.
Yes, sir. But it was not zoned commercial. That was operating in the, in a residential zoning district.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, Commissioner Jaggers, I think that's the property of course.
Well, it's a smoke shop.
No, there was a restaurant in that one, too. Yes, sir.
We can't work as a deputy in here and have nowhere to eat. You vote where these places are.
I'm just gonna throw off on you just a second here. I would change the term that you used in there to massage parlor to something else, because that has a negative context.
Understood, yes, sir. I did, I did try to use the word license as well, but that note here. Thank you.
We're gonna leave that one alone.
Oh, my Lord. Any other questions or comments?
I'm good.
We'll go ahead and put this on for public hearing next week.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and add this for public hearing.
Let's move on to the next subject.
Thank you.
Discuss a request to hold a, uh, thank you much, ma'am. Oh, Lord. Discuss a request to hold a public hearing to allow Harnett County citizens an opportunity to comment on the proposed 5311 community transportation program. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. Hartz Transportation Manager, Chance Terrane. We do this every year for 5311 combined administration grant. We request a public hearing to allow the Harnett County citizens an opportunity to comment on transportation needs. This grant provides healthcare, shopping, employment, public service, and recreation for the citizens of Harnett County. So the requirement by NCDOT, I am the Hartz, is seeking a board's approval to apply an agreement with NCDOT to provide the necessary insurance required match. The total grant budget is $754,946, with a total county match of $96,713. Any questions?
Questions?
I can see it.
Do it publicly.
And a hearing. We have to have a hearing on it.
I know, but you're, you're asking us to approve the meeting, right, the hearing?
Approve the hearing.
Yeah.
All right, so consensus of the board, we'll go ahead and allow public hearing for us.
Sure.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Discuss a request to amend the current library service policy. Ms. Kimberly Van Beck, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the board. Thank you for your time today. I'm here to present amendments to the Harnett County Public Library Service Policy. To begin, the library needed to update its completed directives to align with our new strategic plan goals that were approved in January. So we replaced the prior strategic directives with the library's new goals and initiatives, as outlined under the summary of strategic direction and goals. These now reflect the 2024-2027 strategic plan and include our updated vision and mission statements. Next, in Section Two, Item B, circulation, we made a clarification that a patron must present either a Harnett County Public Library card, or a card from any affiliated NC Cardinal Library, or they may use a valid photo ID to check out materials. This just ensures that there's clear guidance and consistency, both for our staff and for our patrons. In Section Five, Hours of Operations, we needed to update the policy to include the newly opened Ben Haven branch. It was not included in our former service policy, so we've added Ben Haven and its service hours. And additionally, we did have a recent extension of service hours at Irwin Public Library, so we updated those hours to reflect the extended services. And then finally, in Section Seven, Library Staff and Board of Trustees, we did need to add the new Ben Haven representative to our library board of trustees to, to reflect the expanded member. These updates just ensure that our service policy aligns with our current goals and accurately reflects our operations and supports consistent services across all of our branches. And I can answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you much.
Hello, I have a comment. I just want to say, I embrace you being the director over there. You have stepped into big shoes, and I think you have done it really well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Glad this consent agenda for approval as well, Madam Clerk.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have discussed a request to approve Economic Development Staff to negotiate and execute a contract to identify where to construct a new road from Highway 87, Harnett County property in Lexington Plantation. Good morning, Mr. Stephen Badenton.
Hey, good morning. Our request is exactly what you stated.
Excellent.
I have nothing else to say.
Really?
Yes.
Well, I mean, that's too, I mean, so, so you want to give us a little background on how we acquired this property and what we're trying to do there?
Sure. So, so this is the property that was donated to the county last, last year, right beside Lexington Plantation. Our goal is, how do you get from 87 to that property? And so we're, we're looking to, to work with this company to be able to help us achieve that.
That's good. Glad this consent agenda is, well, I'm very, very looking forward to what's gonna happen with that property in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, discuss a request to approve updates to the personnel ordinance. Ms. Janice Lane, good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. I come for you this morning to request the board to approve changes to the personnel ordinance in accordance with the recent MOU that was adopted between the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Elections. The proposed changes are in Article One, Organization of Personnel Systems, Section Two, and that's on page seven, Melissa, if that helps. So page seven was the first change, and it's under coverage, and it's Item E. So the prior language said the Director of Elections, who is, however, subject to the following, and it listed out the articles. We will now change that to say employees of the Board of Elections who are subject. So that is the first change. The second change comes on page eight, Item F. And prior, it said the Board of Election employees are exempt from Article 10. And so now we are moving that to say Article Nine and Ten, which is the disciplinary and the grievance. And those are the only two changes for now.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Who is exempt from, you said article, from the article. There are some employees that are not exempt from that.
Yes. Actually, yes. So the county manager has some, I have it on page seven. There's a list. The county manager has some exemptions, the sheriff, register of deeds, and now the Board of Election employees.
Well, I'm not quite understanding that, because the county manager don't really work for the Board of Elections.
Yeah.
You are part of Harnett County. Let me explain myself clearly. You are part of Harnett County. But the partners to that board, those people that sit on that board are directors, are appointed by the state.
Right. The memorandum of understanding for the Board of Elections.
Oh, so it's for the whole personnel?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. So this is changes to the personnel ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I understand it now.
And on page eight, there are Harnett County employees that have exemptions, and that's at the top of page eight.
Well, that's the question I was asking. Who did have that exemption? You're right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you.
Ma'am.
Well, this consent agenda for approval as well, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Discuss pay for Board of Elections members. Ms. Claire Jones, Elections Director, and Mr. Mike Morrow, good morning.
Good morning, Chair, and Commission members. Wanted to give you some background information that we gathered, based on the discussion that happened last week. Melissa?
[inaudible]
Cool. So currently, as we know, the Board of Elections is an appointed board made up of five members by the Democratic Party and Republican Party. We did find in February 2017 that the Board of Elections voted on a $50 per month increase for July 1, 2018. As a minimum, the general statute requires members of the county Board of Election to be paid $25 per meeting. Present pay right now for the chairman is $250, and the members $200. So we reviewed the surrounding counties and came up with some general information that Claire's gonna walk through for you.
Good morning. So as you can see, surrounding counties' pay of their chair kind of varies depending on what the commissioners and the board in those counties have approved. So it kind of varies. There's not really a good guideline statewide as far as what the pay should be, aside from the general statutes that says 25 per meeting. As you can see, the chart in front of you has the counties listed by size. Sampson with the smallest, up to Wake County being the largest. And so as you can see, the pay for the chair increases more or less with the size of the voter registration count. You can see how it kind of increases. Where Harnett County is still at 250, but Chatham being smaller, the chair gets 350, and the board members get 300. It does go as high as Wake County, with, as large as they are, their chair makes 1,000 a month, and the members make 900. So using this, we kind of just did like an average based on the local counties. So the average registration count, the average chair pay, and we did exclude Moore County because they have, they don't get paid by month, they get paid per meeting. So if they don't have a meeting in a month, they don't get paid for that month, for that month. But this is just kind of what the average broke out to. So for the board chair, 382 a month, and then the members, 325 a month. All right. We went ahead, and I think county admin wanted to just pull some numbers for some existing boards within Harnett County. So we have the Board of Adjustments, Elections, Equalization, Health, Social Services, Library, Planning, Stop Arm. And it breaks down what their member pay is. And as you can see, most of them are in the $100 range, coupled with us. Well, Board of Elections is in the 200. But then the number of meetings varies depending on these different boards. And as you can see, for the last increase on the majority of the boards was 20-plus years, with the library apparently never receiving an increase in their pay. Sorry, library. So this is just kind of how it compares within the county. So again, that's just for your information. The county admin does recommend that if the board does decide to increase the pay, making it effective in the upcoming budget cycle, so it'd be effective July 1, 2026. Yeah, I feel like that's all I have. Yeah. I do have our board member, Allison Fennerston, here if you'd like to speak with her. The board hasn't really had a discussion to come with an agreement on an amount of what they prefer, but if you'd like to speak with her, she's here as well.
Good morning, ma'am.
Thank you, members of the Board of Commission, for allowing me to speak on this subject. First I have to say is, I was thrown off and surprised by this nice increase that was proposed. So that gives you an idea that all five members were not a part of the planning or any agreement of any pay increase. So as it stands now, it is illegal because it was never discussed between all five members. Just like you members, and I appreciate you waiting for the fifth board member, we never discussed this. So it should have been internal. So things keep creeping out since we've gotten this new board. So I just wanted to add that it's illegal right now to even be discussing it until we five discuss it. Thank you.
Outstanding. Sounds like we're gonna send this back to the Board of Elections, so they can have a meeting and figure that out before coming to us.
I just want to say that that was the point that I was making when they came before us. And I asked that they go back and discuss this with their board, and then bring the recommendation back to us. So if that hasn't been done, I'd make a motion that we go back to the board, because everybody needs to be on one accord with this increasing pay.
And actually, when one member brought it up last week, and then I questioned it, the person that brought this up apparently said he was gonna go back and remove it. So no raise.
I don't think it should be removed. I think that you are...
No, I mean, I agree, but we're gonna discuss it amongst us.
That's what I'm asking. There's one person on this board.
One person does not get to usurp five members. We all get one vote apiece. That means we're equal. So whether he wants to listen or not, he will the next meeting. Thank you.
My question simply is, who's, who, the board or the director, who's supposed to present to us that they would like a raise? We need to know that. Who is supposed to present to us that they need a raise?
So the issue was brought, I had a discussion with the Chair of the Board of Elections about that this was brought forward. And he could not make it today because of a funeral that he needed to attend. So he could not make it today. I asked him if he wanted us to still present the information that we found, in other words, our due diligence work. He said, yes, go ahead and present that information, and then that he would then take it back to his board in order to be able to review it with his board. So...
So that's why I'm asking. So the board brings it to us. That's who brings it to us.
And actually, as it, as it works out, the authority to establish the pay for each board that is, reports or works for the county resides with this Board of Commissioners. So the decision on what each of these board members get paid, and you see the list of the various boards that we have, resides with us unless the state legislature says it has to be a certain number, such as a minimum of $25. So it's up to this board to determine what each of our representative boards and commissions get paid. And we set that in the budget each year.
And I can agree to that. But the point that was missing is that, once you ever, when you had your discussions, like we used to have discussions, we never made any agreement amongst you and I until we, I took it back to the board and invited you. And that is the point that was missing. And that is what we need to correct.
That's between you and your other board members.
Right. And that's why I'm asking you, let it go back to where it should have started. And then, we would have invited him, and he, you make the decisions or whatever, per your purview, right? But he skipped the other four, well, two members that I know for sure. Had no clue. And I had people calling me, leaving voice messages, bragging, saying that, can we get some of that Harnett County money? That's unacceptable. Unacceptable. I mean, I wasn't aware. You know how I found out how much money was proposed? From Tony, what's Tony's last name? He was used to be the chair.
Spears.
Spears. Outside in the parking lot after our meeting, he was talking to Board Member McCormick. That's how I found out how much money. So when I heard that message on my machine, I was like, what is he talking about? Until, so that's where we are. And it needs to be level set, because, like I said, one vote per member, discussion should be had. No one should be blindsided. We never were on my four years or two terms on the board. Whenever we had discussions, I said, Claire, invite the manager so that everyone hears everything. We have a moment to discuss, vote, and make a decision. And that's the way it's gonna be. Thank you.
I say we send this back to the Board of Elections for them to come up with whatever their proposal is, and then either the chairman and whoever, and the rest of the members can come back and approach this board again for a request at that time.
Thank you.
Well, I, I just want to say, I like to add to that, because I was here when the last increase in pay was given to the board. And they, they need an increase. I'm not gonna say that they don't need the increase. But at that time, the proposal came to us for one person to get increased. And I said, well, everybody in that board needs to get an increase. So we had to... So we had to send it back too at that time so that the study could be made and so every person on that board would have some increase. It's not some increase vote, some input as to what the decision would be. We're going to make the decision. You can send a figure up here, and it may be more than what we think that Harnett County can pay, but that decision should be up to us after you all have made a decision too as to what increases you want.
I agree. And I just have to say, I'm appalled that you spend one or two meetings and you ask them for a raise when the people have, go back and give it to the other board members. And that's exactly what I will be prepared to say, that don't, chair doesn't mean that you rule everyone. I mean, you take account of your other board members, right? And he will, I'm going to be there to make sure he does. So I hope he watches this and be ready because I will be. Thank you. Again.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and-
I'm one on one with the one commission.
Move this on. Yeah, okay. All right. We'll move on to a discussion of a purpose and structure of the Harnett County Historical Commission. Mr. Chris Appel, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. So here before you to discuss the possibility of creating a historical property commission. As you all know, we have a committee right now that will meet and make recommendations as their advisory committee. But statutorily, you can create a historic preservation commission. And there are some basics that are governed by statute on that. There has to be at least three members with, with certain criteria of their background. They can serve terms no greater than four years, and no specification about the number of terms. So that's just the basics on what the makeup could be, at least three members with certain experience, no more than four years. So up to the board from there on out of how, how big the board is supposed to be. Now, the main part of this, though, going to a commission is you all have authority to grant a certain amount of authority to this commission, and it's laid out, there's 11 different items that you can grant them power to, and it's broken into three categories. So identify, protect, and advocate and cooperate. And I'll just kind of briefly go over the items that you can authorize them to do. So under identify, you can inventory properties of historical, prehistorical, architectural, indoor, cultural significance, recommend areas to be designated as historic districts and structures, in which when the recommendation is made, the Board of Commissioners has to vote on it. Recommend revocation of designated, designation of a landmark district or portion of a district, and enter on the property for examination or survey. Under protect, they can review proposed changes to designated properties and decide on certificates appropriateness. This is a key one, so in making any, once a district or property is designated as historic, and if any changes want to be made by the owner, they have to submit a certificate of appropriateness to make that change. That commission would then, much like Board of Adjustment, would hold a hearing allowing all interested parties to speak for or against that change. So essentially what you're doing is you're kind of grant, you'd be creating another quasi judicial board to hear those kinds of things. So that's the main part of creating commission is you're giving them authority to act on certain things. Next is negotiate with owners for acquisition or preservation of a structure site or object. So that's another one, is you can appropriate money to a commission and they can buy property, they can pay to make upfits or whatever it may be, is you can make appropriations to a commission. Again, acquire properties within the districts, restore, preserve, and operate historic properties. And then under advocate and cooperate, prepare and recommend a preservation element for the local comprehensive plan, conduct educational programming, and cooperate with the state, federal, and local governments, and enter into contracts with state and federal government. So again, that outlines all the things that you can grant authority to a commission. So that's a, just a very high-level general overview of what a commission can do and their authority. So I guess what I'm asking is just for any kind of guidance. So in order, and let me back up, in order to create this commission, you have to adopt an ordinance that lays out all the authority and rules of procedure of, for the board. So if you wish to go into commission, I guess just some general guidance of what you would like to see based on, on the basic requirements under statute. Or alternative, you know, talking to Mr. Trout, is to keep a committee and maybe clarify things that you want them to do just from a, within their authority, which is just make purely recommendations to the board, just like any other committee that we have for the county.
The discussion that we had when, when Mr. Harrington was here was about the historic tourism type situations. So I think this committee needs to make recommendations to this board related to properties that we find historic that could generate tourism, and then make recommendations whether there needs to be a purchase or would there need to be funding provided, in other words, keeping it private, or is there not an entity that is a private or a nonprofit organization that would be able to maintain it if they had funding? And so that, I think, is an additional component of what we want this commission to do, is to help us be the eyes and ears for the board related to anything related to historic tourism, and make recommendations on how to best support historic tourism throughout the county.
Well, I think we, we had talked about it that day, and you, I think you suggested about a commission at one point in time, but I, I don't, it doesn't matter to me if it's a commission or a board, but if it's a commission, I don't think you need more than five members, but if you're going to do a committee, I think you need a few more than that so you'll have enough to meet all the time. You know what I'm saying? So I, I don't, I'm not pushing either way. I just, I just think we need something doing with the history.
Right, and I'm happy to either try to revamp the committee that we have now, get them to meet more, make more recommendations, or if the board wants to create a, a commission with more legal authority, I'm happy to, to present an ordinance for that.
Because our current, our current established historic properties commission is, the title on our, on our website says, "The commission will be responsible for creating and approving the historical guidelines, guidelines used in maintaining historical properties in Harnett County." So-
Oh, they're a commission now?
Yeah, that's what, that already exists in place. So what we could do is take that board, which has five members and two alternates assigned to it, and revamp and add some more to their duties in order to be able to do that. Right now, I know I talked to Registered Deeds Willis, he's on that committee, and they have not met since he started. So if we were to add duties to them, they would actually now have a greater purpose and need to get together and meet. So those that are serving would have a greater purpose. And it just so happens that Cyon Harrington is already a member of that commission. So it could be easier for us to just add more responsibility and duty to that committee.
So it's a commission?
Yes.
Or is it a committee?
Yes, it is the Historic Properties Commission.
Okay. And I imagine that may have been created, so I'd have to go back and look, it may have been created prior to the adoption of 160D because-
It might have been. It's probably been in place for a long time.
160D has added more authority and more guidance as to commissions. So if we already have a commission that was established under prior statute, I would still suggest adopting a new ordinance or a men-
Yes, exactly.
A new ordinance that would revamp what we currently have.
I think we need to re, look at that and increase the number of members to it and then increase the duties because I think the purpose of it is to identify the properties, get it protected, things like that. I mean, that's-
Yeah, and the special requirements for that board are members must have some type of experience and/or education in historic preservation, architecture, archaeology, or related fields. That's what's already there. So we could add to the special requirements something related to tourism as well.
I have a question. If there's any, if, if that board or that commission is asking for funding, any type of funding, it should come to us, right?
Yes. By, by statute is, in order to accomplish, if you want them, you know, it's under these 11 things, which some of them would require funding, such as if you want to allow them to acquire property or to fund renovations or upkeep or whatever it may be, is you can make that, under the, give them that authority, any appropriations to that commission would have to be, come from you. So you can, you can allow them to have that, but they can't do it unless you give them the, unless you give them the funding to do it.
Okay, and then we approve the funding.
And we can go ahead and like, we've had some other private partnerships that have come to us in order to, you know, purchase other properties. We can still work those relationships and stuff.
Those powers still rest with you. They'll bring a recommendation, which would be what I would expect. Mark?
Just a real quick, like, historical, unintended update, for the, for, for this board, it's been around probably for 20 years. We started it 20 years ago. There's been times when you had some active members where it met and done a few things, but there generally is hardly any ever worked because you're waiting for it to come to you. The board's not going out and actively looking for stuff to do. That, and I would be a little hesitant about adding additional members to it, maybe the actual members, but the number of members, we have a really hard time when they do meet, get in a quorum. So if you add more members to it, you're probably, it's going to make it even harder to have the meetings. But I think it, it would be great, like, like Chris mentioned, some of the things that, that's into 160D. This was established before 160D. Having some direction from, from this board would be great, I think, going forward. It's just, it depends on what you, you want them to do. There just really hasn't been any work in, that they are correct, they have not met in a long time.
Well, that's what I want to get changed.
Okay.
And whatever, whatever method is the best method of going with that, let's, let's go that direction. I mean, I, I'm not saying, I don't know what the answer is, but we need to-
Absolutely. I think it's a great thing. We, we would love it. We, we, like I said, we're looking for active things for them to do. So I think what we'll need to do is let's probably call a meeting with that board together, maybe with you all, and then kind of get some direction. And like I said, I think the bones are in place. We may need to change a few things to, to match up with 160D to accomplish some of the things that you are talking about, but I think we already have the bones in place to make it happen.
I think it'd be very appropriate for us to meet with that board, this board meet with that board and let them see us face to face and to, you know, hey, this is what we would like to see you start the direction, and give them some direction.
Yep. And more matters, and what I can do is in preparation for any meeting we have, I can send you, again, the list of things that you can authorize them to do and maybe some examples what other counties have adopted, so if that would help provide some guidance of what you want to-
Absolutely.
Look towards a, a future work session as soon as we can get it arranged. Our next work session's not till September 30th, so we may be able to get it arranged by then. We'll, we'll make it out, talk to, I'm not even sure who the Chair is currently. Do you know who the Chair is, Jay?
I do not, sir.
Let me know, and I'll reach out to him.
Will do.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Now, you're up again to discuss a request to fund the jail navigator position.
Yes, Commissioner. So a couple of years ago, you all adopted a resolution setting aside $215,000 for what we called jail wrenchy navigator. What it is, is a clinical social worker that works in the jail to help run the medication assisted treatment program in the jail. That funding resolution actually expired June 30th of this year. The position's currently open, the, the, the person that we had in that position just left about a month or a month and a half ago. So we need to advertise for that, but before we can do that, we need to fund the position again. We do think it's a much-needed program or position to run this, this program. Without it, they, they can't do inductions while they're in the jail, so it is very important. And the opioid task force and executive committee did vote to approve a funding of, this time, $250,000. That just accounts for any colas or raises so that they can receive that, and also some case, possible case management software. And so instead of just handwriting all the notes, so we can do electronic documentation like all the other medical fields do. So that's why we increased it up to 250,000. And just a little further background, of the 215 that we, you previously allocated, we only end up spending a little over $70,000 of that, and part of that's because we had federal funding that ended up being cut off recently. So hence not reason why we need to reallocate some opioid, some of funds because the federal funding had been cut off that we were using for, for that position.
Two years.
And this would be for another two-year period, yes. And I, I would run it through the end of December, so a little over two years, just, we need time to get a person in here. So what it is, it'd be effective now, that would expire in 2020, December 31st of 2027, just give a little extra time to hire the, the position.
I have this consented, I'm under for approval. Thank you very much, sir. All right. It's time we review applications to serve on boards and committees. Now, we do have a member that is absent.
Mr. Chair, I would move, or not move, but I would recommend that we proceed with Mr. Chris Prince on District Four. But the only question I have is, they don't designate here, but I would like for him to be the Fire Chiefs Association representative.
Okay. No objection. We'll have Mr. Chris Prince for the Fire Chiefs Association on the consent for next Now, this is for the Harnett County First Responders Advisory Committee, and I also see some applications here where it's labeled for the Fire Chiefs Association. How exactly is the, that breakdown working? Because on the applications, it all says for the First Responders Advisory Committee. Are there different positions that there would serve on those?
There would be one member from eastern half of the county and one from-
That's per district, correct?
Chris, I don't think it would just two, right?
The Fire Chiefs, it's, it's not district sensitive, but it was just, we wanted two members from the Fire Chiefs Association representing basically east, western and eastern half of, of the county.
I would make a recommendation for Chief Jarvis, Alan Jarvis, who submitted a, an application for him to serve on the Fire Chiefs Academy for the western side if there's no opposition.
I'll see one here for District One.
I guess, has anybody applied yet?
That's District Three.
Yeah. This guy, that is five.
I don't think anybody's applied yet.
Yeah, District Five, I mean, this is down here in Cameron, this is where one, one, two, and five all touch. He will cover the western side, would be my recommendation. He's the current Fire Chief of Spout Springs.
Repeat that.
Right now, we're looking for two different Fire Chiefs, one side of the county, the other on the other side. Mr. Jarvis lives in western side, actually, Spout Springs, Fire.
I recommended Mr. Prince.
I would recommend him for that, for the Fire Chiefs, for that side of the-
Well, I don't mind recommending him, but I think that if we can get one for District One, we need to reach out to-
You got, there are two more positions.
Yeah. What I'm also saying, the Fire Chiefs, he serves District One and District, because how the lines come down-
I got you now.
Right across from his fire department is District One.
Okay.
And everything around there.
I, I just don't want District One to have some kind of-
You, you got two positions.
Okay, that's what I want to-
We just hadn't gotten many applications yet.
Yeah, okay. I, I'm clear. I just wanted to make sure I know I'm voted for.
Yes, ma'am. Is it fine if we put Mr. Jarvis on for the other Fire Chief position? Good with that? Or would we like to hold over just for next week because Commissioner Matthews has?
Okay.
You think we'll just sit the whole business over till next week?
I'd be fine with that because we have some applicants from four in here as well. Or three.
Three, yeah. But now these, okay, yeah, but, but these are not, we have, each commissioner has two positions.
Correct.
And then we have a position, two positions out of the Fire, I mean, Chiefs Association. What I recommended was the Chiefs Association, and that's what you did. We're not doing the districts yet.
Okay.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, ma'am.
Well, I agree with that.
So we'll have Mr. Prince and Mr. Jarvis for the Fire Chiefs. We're gonna have Mr. Prince and Mr. Jarvis for the Fire Chiefs Association.
And can we also, any other members, applications, can we go ahead and vote on them at the next meeting also if they come, if we have asked?
And then we'll, we'll hold the rest of the, um, vacant positions open for next week to discuss, please. All right. County Mayor's report, Mr. Trell.
Thank you, Chairman. I have one item. Um, former Commissioner Mark Johnson is again coordinating the 9/11 remembrance event in Dunn. Um, it'll be Thursday at 11:00 a.m. at the Dunn Community Center, and he wanted to make sure and remind commissioners, you're invited to come and have lunch with, uh, the various first responders that'll be at the event.
That's all I have. And what time was that again?
11:00, at the Dunn Community Center.
Okay.
And I understand we have a need for a closed session.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I'm moving the board going to closed session for the following purposes: To consult with the county legal staff in order to preserve attorney-client privileges concerning the handling of certain litigation, namely the workman's compensation claim of Jennifer Dases versus Davis versus County of Harnett. I see file number 24-046267. This motion's made in pursuit of the general statute 143-31811A3.
Second, a motion and second, move in the closed session, non-discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.